Education for the children. And this evening, we have with us from the middle school, we have Mrs. Jar and the middle school student council. So if they could please come up, they're going to do the pledge for us. And where is Mrs. Madica? I understand she was coming in to do it with them?
No, I was joking.
Oh, I don't think they thought you were joking. Okay.
I'm just kidding.
Come on, guys. Okay, I'm going to introduce who we have here. First, Mrs. Jar, who is the student council advisor at the middle school. And students we have here tonight, if you guys will just raise your hand when I say your name, so either one of the crowd knows who you are. Isabel D'Alire. Michael Dalio. Riley Good. Cooper Hahnold. Landon, huh? Valerie Cassidy. Cameron Moore. And Olivia Point. Excellent. Thank you, guys. And at this time, we could all please rise for the pledge, allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, guys. Thank you very much. Okay, next is our mission statement.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that our students to be successful in. Chris.
Here.
Margaret.
Here.
Uh, here. Tracy.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Amy.
Here.
And I'm here.
Okay, next, motion to approve agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Board. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing not all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Motion here. Next, motion to approve the consent agenda. Is that kind of good? Okay, it has been moved and supported. Any discussion?
In the consent agenda, the personnel report, you'll see three retirements and or resignations. Ms. Nolan, retiring from middle school. She's up to 22 years of service. We will recognize her at the June 11th Board of Education meeting. Ms. Michonne will be retiring as high school principal after 17 years. And we will recognize her at the June 11th Board meeting. The third item that resigned, much like we did with the counselor, we want to make sure that that person has not helped us.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. A both. Motion here. Next is our truffle moment. And this is a part of our meeting where we like to recognize great things that happen in our community or our school community. And this evening, we have the backpack blessings from the community.
Yep, this time I'd like to introduce, in the representation, Mrs. Flora Cunda and Mrs. Plait.
So, we're proud to be able to give you some information tonight about backpack blessings.
Well, I need to, because we can't hear you.
So, we're here to present, do a little intro for Backpack Blessings for the Community. Jen and I were very happy to be able to attend all of the staff meetings today. And we were able to share information to the staff at all three of the buildings about this important program. And we'd like to share some more information tonight. Imagine if the last meal you had was at school the day before.
Imagine coming home from school and there isn't a snack to hold you over until dinner.
Imagine if you aren't sure if you'll eat dinner tonight at all.
Imagine it's Friday afternoon and you don't know if your next filling meal will be at school the following Monday.
It's hard to imagine, but this is the stark reality for some of the families that we work with.
There may have been job loss for one or both parents. Or maybe the car broke down and the repair has to happen today.
A parent or child may become severely ill.
A family may have to decide between paying for medication and buying food.
There are many different scenarios or reasons why a family doesn't have the ability to be able to provide food for themselves. This is what it means to be food insecure.
Food insecure families exist in our community and in our schools.
And these are the families that Backpack Blessings helps.
This program has grown and evolved into what it is today, thanks to all the wonderful volunteers.
So tonight, we want to recognize all of the hard-working effort of the volunteers for this program. But before we do, Mr. Jim Avery, who is one of the coordinators of the program, along with Janine, his wife, who couldn't be here tonight because she's sick. He's going to talk a little bit about Backpack Blessings.
First of all, I'm Jim Avery. Some of you who have been around this community for a long time probably know me. For those of you who don't, I have been here a lot longer. Stick by the mic. I thought I could project far enough. Apparently, I can. That's fine. So, most of you have seen these boxes sitting at the schools, the backpack blessing boxes. That's what we're going to be talking about tonight. The program actually started a few years ago when Superintendent Wonsley and Susie Hutchinson, who was the pastor of the United Methodist Church, got together and decided that they needed to do something about children who were food insecure, who were having to hoard food or come in after a weekend and just stuff themselves with the free reduced lunch. Janine and I started working on the program by packing backpacks. At that time, it was truly a backpack program. If you're familiar with any of the backpack programs that exist, essentially what it is, is they take non-perishable goods, they place them in backpacks, and they give the backpacks to the children in need on their way out on Friday, with the idea that those backpacks come back on Monday. I know Mom Clements has a little bit of a problem. They issue about 250 backpacks and not all of them come back on Monday, but you know, that's the way the program happens to run. Over the course of time, we gradually assumed some additional responsibility for the program and we decided that there were ways that we could improve it for our children and the families in the community. The number of food insecure children in Michigan continues to grow. There was an article on the front page of the Free Press, I think, last week, something like that, in which they talked about the fact that students in economically disadvantaged districts have grown across the board. Now, that's not just Detroit. We're talking about the suburbs of Detroit. For example, Oak Park School District went from 64% to 79% of their students who are in economically disadvantaged schools. Gleaners, and I'll talk a little bit more about Gleaners in a little bit, but Gleaners now has roughly 200 school programs as part of their total 500 programs. That means schools are coming to them to get food to help feed their students. Weekend Survival Kits, which is another Mid-Michigan program, serves, on average, every week 11,000 students. That area, they're in Williamson, Michigan, up in the Lansing area, and they cover the area of Mid-Michigan. So, the students in need are not only growing, but the fact is, is that about a third of our kids are living with a family where the family doesn't have secure food, which is probably the major problem in terms of trying to meet the needs of the children. So let me, let me talk a little bit about our program, one that serves our community. And we'll try to go through this relatively quickly. First of all, the program is solely dedicated to families with children in the Richmond Community Schools. The number of families in the program does vary. We talk about families because you just don't feed children, you feed the family. In the case of where we are right now, we have about 11 families in the program. We have 47 members of those families that we feed. The families range, everything from infants to grandparents. There are any number of homes in which the grandparents have taken in the adult children and the grandchildren as well. The families remain anonymous for our volunteers. They are, the only way we identify them is with a letter code. So it's family A, B, C, D. We do keep the numbers and types of members of the family, so we'll talk about, or we'll keep a record of the number of infants, adults, children, and so on. That way, it helps us when we develop the meal plan. We provide two days' worth of meals. We provide two dinners, two lunches, and two breakfasts to each family. The families have an option of school pickup or delivery. We now are only doing delivery. We don't have anyone picking up at schools. And the reason we do that is because we just don't provide cameras. We also provide perishable foods as part of the program. And I'll talk about that in a few minutes. The program runs year-round. It doesn't end when school ends. It goes through the summer, so there's a classroom over here, our old science room, that's our official location, as far as the district goes. And so we're here in the summer when they're waxing the floors and cleaning up the building. From a resource standpoint, perishable and non-perishable food is donated by the community. That's why you see these boxes. Okay, the food comes in. We go around. As soon as we get a call from the school, we'll pick up that food as part of the program. We get cash contributions from members of the community. All of that cash is managed through the UMC here in Richmond. Janine and I don't handle that. We make sure that money goes there. And then I'll talk a little bit about the purchase process and how we get reimbursed for that. We also get grants. Becky Stewart's here today, and she's one of our volunteers. And she's managed to write a grant or two for us from Trinity. And those come in very handy, because they manage to refill our cash offer so that we can continue to purchase the goods that we don't receive in donations. We also have volunteers from the community in churches and schools that work with us. So it's truly a community-wide program. If you look at it from a cost perspective, we spend about $1.20 per meal per person. Now, that doesn't seem like a lot, but when you look at it on a weekly basis, we spend about 300 to 350 out-of-pocket expense in addition to the donations that we receive. That, when you add up over time, is a program that runs about $15,000 a year. So we're, we actively seek cash contributions and grants from various organizations. Program administration and operations provided by volunteers. My wife and I are, we do a lot of the work, as you'll see. But we also have any number of volunteers that come in and will work in the program with us, whether it's packing or helping us with resources. With our current resources, we feel we can support about 12 families or 50 people. We'd really like to increase that, because we have more in need than we are serving right now. We also have provided supplementary services to our families. We've had families who needed beds for their kids. We've been able to work with Trinity Lutheran to provide bicycles to some of the children. We've managed to get mental health care, where we've identified that for a family member. So there are a number of things that happen as a result of the fact that we interact with these families on a weekly basis as part of our delivery process. Our goal is to provide balanced meals to our families. So unlike a lot of other programs, we're going in with three bags of groceries, two which are basically non-perishable and one which is perishable. We're going to provide them with milk. We're going to provide them with eggs. We're going to give them bread. We're going to provide a protein. Believe it or not, it's much less expensive to provide a fresh protein than to buy a can of hamburger or something like that, which is the only way you can get them protein. We've created six, the way we do this, because we have limited space here at the school to store things, unlike a lot of food factories that you'll see, what we've done is we've created, for those of you familiar with the auto industry, a just-in-time process. So we have effectively six menus that we use. And each week, we know what that menu is. We know what we have in inventory. We know what comes in on Sunday from contributions and we're able to then determine what we have to purchase for that week, just to meet that week's menu. That way, we keep the actual amount that we have to store to a minimum. So each week, there's a group, there's a process we go through. We do an inventory of the food in stock. We add donations. We purchase what's needed for a given week's menu. And then we go out and we go through this process, which we did today. Well, I did today, because my poor wife is really sick. And with the help of, oh, there he is. One of our volunteers, one of our student volunteers. We put together a stage and stock for that day. And then on Tuesday, we pack the food. And then Tuesday afternoon, we do our deliveries, Tuesday afternoon and evening. Now, one of the reasons that we do this delivery is that a lot of our families don't have the ability to get to a location to pick up the food. Oftentimes, their work schedules, because they'll work two or three or four different jobs, doesn't allow them to get to a location to pick up the food when the food is available. So we are flexible. If a parent is not available, if a family is not available to receive the food, we'll make arrangements to get them some way, get it to them some way. But it's usually Tuesdays afternoon and Tuesday evening, and we get all the food out. It's not an extensive process. It's maybe 45 minutes in the afternoon and 30 minutes at night. So we get food out to all the families. So this is my little graphic. We start out with the churches on Sunday. Everybody at Walmart and Costco and Sam's Club and a few other retail spaces know us well, because we usually come out with a couple of large baskets full of food. I take that, and I've got a traverse. I put all the seats down. And I pretty much pack it, top to bottom, front to back, with the food that we'll need for that week. Once we've done that, we bring the parent, the non-perishables, back to the school. We keep the perishables ourselves. I've dedicated half my garage to this, with two refrigerators and two freezers. And basically, what happens is we pack the non-perishables in the morning. And then in the afternoon, we bring that back, we pack the perishable items, and we deliver. And then we start the process all over again, because we're going to do an inventory against the next week's menu when we do that pack on Tuesday. And we're all set to start the process again. This is truly a community support, a community involvement. We get support from any number of groups and entities across the city. And I'd like to give you an example of that. So the folks from Richmond Family Video at the holidays had a number of turkeys. And for those of you who sat through the earlier presentations, I don't really know the count. But I'm guessing it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 25. But we were able to use and provide those turkeys to our families. And what we weren't able to give to our families, we found homes for. And we had, we had a little bit of a storage problem. I had turkeys deposited at Ken's Country Kitchen in their freezer. I called it my turkey bank. I would deposit turkeys and take out turkeys as needed. But we did find homes for all the turkeys finally, and so they were well-used. Kroger is an example, where they gave us a stack of gift cards. So when we go to Kroger and we use those gift cards, we're able to purchase on their dollars. So that's pretty much the whole program. Just from the standpoint of people that are here, Becky Stewart. If you'd stand up, Becky, just please. Jane, we're joined. Jane offers to be a part of it. And we're going to have one of our students, Eddie is here. Eddie comes in. So Mino Salagio provides bags for the program, shopping bags, right? Well, to conserve our shopping bags, what I have the students do is I have them staple the handles. And that way, we don't have to double-pack bags with all that heavy food. So they do a great job, the job I hate. And they get it done well. Any questions, the board? Okay, great. Just one last thing, just to tell you what we want to do, because I want to make sure everybody's clear that this program isn't stagnant, all right? We are working right now to effectively complete an application with Gleaners. We'd like to be part of their program. I talked to the people up in Lansing, and they said they could cut their costs by half by just using Gleaners as a source of their, for their food. We're also looking for ways to store more here, so we can keep them around the shelf and not necessarily have to purchase just in time. We're also looking to add additional people to the program. I say that, and I always said this at the earlier thing, you know, my wife and I are in our 70s and our backup are in their 80s. And so we need to find a few younger people that can come in and, you know, help out with the program. So we'll be looking for that. We'd like to really improve or increase the program next year, maybe even double it if we could. Thank you very much.
Just to follow up on that, this program really started just with an idea, a conversation. It's truly grown to be a community-wide program. And I can't thank the community members enough for their support. We have that need right here in Richmond. The staff, every other Friday, we, for Jane, we make a donation of money. And those Fridays, I'd like to go over the Blessings for the Backpack Program and help facilitate the parents' employment.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all the hard work that you do for our families. We appreciate it. Next is our Teacher of the Year presentation.
Fans of author Patricia Placco, who know her work and her talent for weaving a very colorful family history throughout her picture books. In the story "Thank You, Mr. Faulkner," which is a classic, Mrs. Placco shares her childhood triumph over dyslexia and discovers, the discovery of reading as an inspirational story. Young Tricia, in the story, is eager to taste the sweetness of knowledge that her grandfather has always revered. But when she looks at the words and numbers, everything is jumbled up. Tricia endures the cruel taunts of her classmates, who often called her dumb, and falls behind in her studies. But finally, the encouragement and efforts of a fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Faulkner, Faulk, excuse me, triggers a monumental turning point in Tricia's life. She begins to blossom and develop all of her talents, including reading. Placco's tale is more than just a heartfelt, because of its personal nature. This story is an example of the dedicated and determined professionals that teach our students each and every day in Richmond Community Schools. Tonight, we saw three of those teachers. At this time, I would ask that Mrs. Ranger, Elementary Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Clausen, Middle School Teacher of the Year, and Mr. Ruben, High School Teacher of the Year, come forward. We've got a couple of presentations tonight. Every year, I reach out to our representative. In this case, Mr. Representative Yarich has come forth and has a special tribute for these three Teacher of the Years. Representative Yarich?
Thank you very much for having me. As the son of a first-grade teacher, education and teaching is near and dear to my heart. So definitely a pleasure to come out and give these tributes. I'd just like to highlight one piece. I'm not going to read the whole thing. But Michigan has a long tradition of belief in the value of education. Our state was the first to write in its constitution for an officer with statewide duties in public education. In the settlements in all parts of the state, hiring a school teacher and finding a place to hold classes were always among the first task, marking a sense of community for the pioneers. And it is important to recognize that the work of our teachers is a development future for our youth. So we have Teresa Ranger. Jamie Clausen.
Thank you, Representative Yarich. To continue celebrating our award recipients, at this time, I'd ask Mrs. Michonne, Mr. Bartels, and Mr. Koch, Mr. Ipania. And we're going to begin with, let's start off with the high school. So, one of the principals presents and recognizes you. If you stay standing up here, then I'll ask the board to come up front and we can do a shake of hand with you, okay? So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Michonne.
Thank you, because you're right, we're usually last. Richmond High School is proud to announce Mr. Ruben as our Teacher of the Year. Mr. Ruben has been with the district for 17 years. Matter of fact, we started together. And I was going to share with them, I have a picture that we took in the first newsletter of us out front. Mr. Ruben loves sharing his passion for science with his students. He is always seeking out challenging labs, taking the lead on the new science standards, and acquiring resources for the classroom. He believes that students come first. He is always available for them if they need extra help, even if it takes time out for lunch. I have a group of young ladies that I know every day where to find them at lunch, because they're in there with him. And he's here before and after school. He is active at our faculty meetings. He coaches. He's also around with his camera, going to events and things on his own time. So he's very active here at the high school. I have several students here this evening that would like to talk about Mr. Ruben and share why they think he should be Teacher of the Year. I have Julia Akerly, Noel Riggs, and Julie Maximouk.
Mr. Ruben has impacted my life from the day I met him. He's a man that I, as well as many others, look up to. His passion for teaching and love for the school is seen every day. He never fails to make sure his students are at their best in and outside of the classroom. Not only does he care about his students' education, but he makes sure to always give advice and show his support at sporting events. I can confidently say that Mr. Ruben is a perfect fit for this role and always will be a man I look up to.
I'm not surprised Mr. Ruben got awarded with Teacher of the Year. He is one of the most hard-working and caring people you'll ever meet. He not only cares about teaching and making sure his job gets done, he cares about the students. There's been so many times where I've been having a bad day, and he'll take me aside to make sure I'm all right. Even when he doesn't want to hear it, he will still listen. He doesn't do this just for me. He doesn't for many students, because he's so passionate about what he does. He'll always try to support the students as well. He came to our cheerleading states and took pictures of us competing. Mr. Ruben is everyone's favorite teacher, because he is so thoughtful and kind to all of his students. I couldn't think of anyone better for this award. Congratulations, Mr. Ruben.
Mr. Ruben is one of those people that you say you want to be when you're older. There are so many reasons why I aspire to be him. He is selfless and will give all his time to his students, no matter if it's a personal issue or if they're struggling in his class. He is caring. He will always care about each and every single student who passes or has passed through the door of his classroom, even if they aren't his favorite. He is passionate about teaching and loves his job and proves to us that he's passionate by teaching us passionately. When I think of the Teacher of the Year award, I can't think of anyone else besides Mr. Ruben. That's why I can't be surprised when I found out that he won this prestigious award. Congratulations, Mr. Ruben, for getting the award.
Again, congratulations, Mr. Ruben, for being chosen the high school teacher of the year. We're proud to have you on our staff.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bartels, Middle School Principal.
Unlike the high school students, I'm not, I didn't write mine on my phone. The Jamie Clausen came to us several years ago. And we are very lucky to have her. She's a very dedicated, passionate teacher. She is a true teacher leader within RMS. And she always leads with her best foot forward. She makes lasting, meaningful relationships with parents, her colleagues, and most importantly, her students. The needs of her students and students that she doesn't have in her class are her first priority in everything she does and everything that she comes to Ms. Borg and myself about. And when she's coming, you always know it's in the best interest of students. On a typical day, Jamie must walk at least 100 miles. She is always on the go. And whether it be helping students, working with teachers during their prep hour to go over strategies to help her students succeed, she pushes in classrooms to check on her students, both academically and emotionally in the classroom. And she makes peer observations. She's never sitting down. And when she's teaching, it's always hands-on and interactive with her students. And she likes to decorate. And her room is very comfortable. And she likes to decorate, and her room is very comfortable. It's an excellent place for learning, learning targets, learning tools, and it exemplifies education, but it's also warm and welcoming. And she also does that to our teaching lounge. You know when there's a new, a new holiday coming up because it is decorated by her and Mrs. Peitzel and Ms. Karkoff? And it helps me, when I see you, we have St. Patrick's Day coming up, a month before St. Patrick's Day. So, she, Christmas early, we start that in July. So, with that being said, we have two students up here, several students were talking very kindly of her the other day when we were talking about this, but a lot of her students were shy. We have two excellent students here and two brave students, Savannah Kirby and Cody Vanek, to talk about Mrs. Clausen.
Hi, I'm Cody Vanek, I'm sixth grade. Mrs. Clausen is my sixth grade math teacher. She's very loyal to me and to Hannah. She helps us get better at goals, and every time I'm upset or my day hasn't been going well, she always is there for me and all the students. And the one thing, Mrs. Clausen, is I'm happy that you're a math teacher. I don't think I could ever ask for the best math teacher or whatever teacher in Richmond.
Hi, I'm Savannah, I'm in eighth grade. Ms. Clausen is my math teacher. And this year, I was in Ms. Clausen's class, math, and every other year I was in math, I never understood the concept. And this year, I have been passing math with an A. And she makes learning easier, hands-on, more comfortable learning, and making students more comfortable to go up to the board and actually do problems, and it's okay if they get it wrong. We are very proud of Ms. Clausen for getting student of the, the Teacher of the Year, and...
So lastly, Mrs. Clausen, glad to have you at RMS, wouldn't want anyone else in your shoes, and for what you do for kids, the trust that you build, that they trust you and go to you, and the relationships.
And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Koche, who wants to...
Good evening, everyone. I've had the privilege to work with Mrs. Ranger these past two years, being newer to the district, me being newer than Mrs. Ranger, just in case anybody needs that clarification. Some things over the last couple of years, just always amazed by the relationships that Mrs. Ranger has, not only with her current students, but former students and parents. Anywhere we go, when we have concerts or something, we always see, Mrs. Ranger sees former students, talks to them, just like though she still has them in class. So she definitely is able to build that relationship. Also, all the different activities. Science night, one of the famous, most popular parts of science night is Ranger's rockets, where students get to do that. McSteph night, which here's a little plug, it is tomorrow night at McDonald's from four o'clock until seven o'clock. For some of the proceeds will go to the lead, to be asked program. But if you go there, you will see Mrs. Ranger, her favorite spot, behind the counter, usually helping get the drinks, getting the orders for the parents and for the students. Something new this year, Spanish club, another opportunity for students to learn some cultural differences, and just to expand the world, learning a little bit about Spanish and their culture. Now, at the elementary school, as I started reaching out, I have some students, some were, I'd love to be there, but not sure really want to talk, or the parents were saying not sure they want to talk. So just make it fair and have a little bit of fun, like we like to at the elementary. I just want to reach out to all Mrs. Ranger students who want to come up at this time. Come on up, everybody. One scan, it just shows how well Mrs. Ranger is liked and respected in the classroom. Not only do the students want to be there, but thank you to all the parents who brought the students there. They're not driving on their own yet, so they still need the parents to drop them off. So I know someone who wanted to draw pictures, write notes. Let's see if anybody's brave enough to come up and talk. Or, it's a cool as microphones, I can take it out and give it to them. Okay? Okay, when you come up and talk, please introduce yourself first, and then anything you, anything you'd like to say about Mrs. Ranger?
I like Mrs. Ranger because she helps me with math, and she is very kind.
Hi, my name's Donnie. Miss Ranger Teacher of the Year 2018. She is kind, she helps us learn, she gives us back texts if we do something nice, and I was lucky to get Miss Ranger.
Mrs. Ranger is the best because she is fun and very nice to us. She is patient, and she loves her students. She helps me to be my best every day. Thank you, Mrs. Ranger, for all you give, you make me smile every day.
Hi, my name's Dylan, and Miss Ranger is a great teacher. She helped me read when I was struggling, and I had, and she made me good at math, and I'm, and I'm happy to say, Miss Ranger is the best teacher in the world.
So Mr. Zilat just looked at me. So absolutely not. As we reach out to the students and the parents, I did have one parent who requested, Mr. Tober. He asked if he could say something, so if you can please come up. And then students, when Mr. Tober's done, then I'll have you give some of your gifts and cards to Mrs. Ranger.
I was worried that, he said the goal was to make Miss Ranger look good, I think that makes her look good right there. I don't know how I can beat that. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that stood out about Miss Ranger and Richmond Community Schools. Jonathan's in Miss Ranger's class, we, me and my wife just had our fourth child, and we helped her move our home, we're working with a realtor, and we gave her everything we need, the price range, and we told her we want to be in Richmond. I work in Richmond, and I go home on my lunch break and see my kids, and she keeps bringing me to these houses in Yale, St. Clair, and all over the place. Why can't you find one in Richmond? Hard to find a house in Richmond because you got the best EMS, great fire department, awesome police department, and mostly the schools. Everybody wants Richmond schools. That's a blessing, and I know it's because of teachers, like he's like staying up here right now. And everybody knows, as we go out there, it can be Home Depot, fast food, there's just employees out there that are just there for a paycheck. They just want to get by, they want to get out of there at five o'clock. And like Miss Ranger, you can tell she's a person that's there, she loves her job, she loves her students. Countless times I can tell you where she's bought things for the book fair, where the kids didn't have money to buy things or provide snacks, she's just been awesome. And thank you for making my home value go up.
Okay, students, at this time, I think you want to go see Mrs. Ranger, don't you? Come on over. And we have one student who was unable to make it, so she left the card on my desk of Mrs. Ranger today.
At this time, I'd like to ask the board, you can come up in front of the table here. On behalf of the Board of Education, I cannot thank you enough for what you do for the students of Richmond. What you just heard here exemplifies our school district and the passionate and ability you do. There is a book here for you. Very much, and congratulations.
If we can give one more round of applause for our... First, before a motion is going to be discussed, our attorney, my communication. It's been moved and supported, it's our new discussion. Okay, and the draw call. I'm Brian.
I'm Mary.
I'm Sarah. Chris. I'm Luffy. I'm Carrie. Take care of the whole session, and we will return. Twenty-four. Do I have to amend the agenda? Motion, Tracy, to amend the agenda first? Or do we just do the motion? Okay, all right. Okay, I'm going to go first. Yes, let's make the motion for amendment.
Motion to amend the agenda, item nine A. Opening of superintendent's contract.
For budgetary reasons? Sarah, that's you. Okay, there's been a motion in support to making nine A open a superintendent contract for budgetary reasons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, now, I would need the motion. Chris?
I want to open the superintendent's contract between the Board of Education and the superintendent with respect to amendment four, section one.
It has been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now, now we move to item ten, budget presentation. Okay, all right, I'm going to do that. This is a little bit of new territory, so bear with us here. We, the motion that we just made to open the superintendent's contract for budgetary reasons is section one of Mr. Wamsley's contract where he, that... Amendment number four. Section one, employment, where it discusses the daily and operational needs of the district. There were certain positions that were in that part of the contract, and Mr. Wamsley is looking to open that up, to revise those, one of those positions, and to create another one for budgetary reasons. And the position he's speaking to remove is the Director of Curriculum, and the position that we will have conversation about needing is the Director of Facilities and Operations. So, that everyone understands and is up to speed on that, we will move forward with our 2019 budget presentation number two.
Okay, since our last budget discussion, you were waiting on the House budget in your packet. First item. Okay, there we go. We now have all three budgets released from the state for Richmond Community Schools. They are all, the per pupil proposed foundation loan is within ten dollars. The governor's budget for Richmond would be a $240 per increase per pupil. The House concurs with the governor's recommendation. It says 120 to 240, it's based on a two X formula. Those that have a low foundation would get two times those that have a higher foundation. We'll look there in the middle. And how related between them? For Richmond, it's $240. The House budget would be $240. The Senate budget for Richmond would be a $230 per pupil increase. So it would be my recommendation that the board build the budget on the $230 per pupil increase when we will start looking at the actual budget. The other documents, and again, we can talk about it at some point because it will have some effect on the budget, are different aspects of the general budget, whether it's online education, or if we do not have. But some of the budgets are still at 100% as we are now, but the governor's budget comes out at 75. Some of this doesn't affect us, other than it will affect us if they reduce that per pupil. But all being in the $230 range, I would recommend that we base our budget on that $230. So with that being said, if we go down again, start looking at enrollment projections as we did last time. Where is the note of the sheet? Apology, in your packet. The enrollment projections, and nothing has changed from last time, moving up the students to the next grade level, assuming 90 kindergarteners, puts us at 137880. And when you look at the blended 90-10 count, it puts us 37 students down for next year, 37 FTEs, excuse me, now.
Is this, the kindergarten number that you had, the 90 is what you already have that's come through, rounding up on that, is that what?
No, we are not 90, we are not at 90. We are around 55, is where we were that last year around this time. If you were to take a number, we ended with 803. Well, if you look at the 18-19, we have ended with 103. If we assume 90, move everybody up, FTE-wise, we would be a total of 50 FTEs down, but when you do the 90-10 blended count, we would be 37.67 student FTEs down. So if the board comfortable with this recommendation, moving forward that we use these student enrollment counts to build our budget going forward.
Yes.
With that, now we look at, well, what does that do to the budget projection? Okay, you'll notice in the column Q here, we have currently a $140,000 structural problem. That was in the amendment that we did in February. With that blended count, and if we assume 230 rather than 240, the lowest of the three budgets, that actually would generate $30,000 more in revenue, even though we're down. It generates 30,000, so that puts our structural problem at 190,000. So that 190,000 is what we're going to tackle. Is the board in general comfortable with the 230 number based on the three budgets that were presented by the House, the Senate, and the governors? As low as the two, so if it becomes 240, then it's a business we're gonna stop. Okay, so now we're looking at, well, how are we going to address that structural?
How many students does that mean? 109,000. My students deserve 109,000.
130,000.
109,000.
109,000 divided by 78.
14.
14,200. So, part of addressing that structural problem, with the retirement of Mrs. Mishan, and with the elimination of the Director of Curriculum, and the retirement of Mrs. Nolan, who was a teacher that was on the board or superintendent tonight. It would net not filling Mrs. Nolan's position, this would be based on having three kindergarten teachers, so an elementary teacher, or we could move out of the elementary school to the middle school, certification, you know, draw that move, that aspect. Not having just three kindergarten teachers at this point, adding the Director of Facilities, making the assumption, assuming the Director of Curriculum would become one of the administrators with Mrs. Mishan's retirement, it would net result us about $160,000 in savings. And I don't, at this, I don't have who is where, and I see you think through that process and talk to administrators and so forth, but now as the Director of Facilities, what I'm envisioning for that position would be anything, everything about the operations, maintenance of this district. Currently, if there is a work order that goes through that requires the heating to be adjusted, a screen to be fixed, a light bulb that's out, toilet, the plug that needs a plumber comes to my office, between myself, I then coordinate on to the contractors, whether it's Wagner Plumbing, Richmond Electric, I meet with them, I want to get in the fire suppression system, that probably was that aspect of getting quotes in that process. I could easily probably account for 30 hours of my time just coordinating that aspect alone. So all of those duties would go to the Director. Ordering paper towel, ordering green soap, that order comes to me, I place the order, or I ask Carrie to place the order if I'm not available, or I ask Pam. We've got a system now, so all those would go to the Director. Of the curriculum end, if we, our administrators are definitely, the principal end, are focusing more on the instruction in the building. Beans are formerly, they are part of the instruction, they are more on the non-instructural aspects of the building. For overseas athletics, so that's a huge chunk of the time, to Reinhardt, that's a huge piece of this, I just coordinated high school. The last two years, we've done grade level meetings, I think it's been two years, maybe three, two years. The principals are in charge of coordinating what that conversation is, where they want to go with them. In the past, they have either done it without Mr. Burkmire there, or sometimes he is there. Mr. Burkmire has led the conversation with the specialist teachers, today with the Spanish teachers, meeting today, the other day they had P E teachers. So some of those roles from a curriculum adoption, if we're looking at, let's say, this year's social studies, I would be working with three principals, the socials adoption, with that most likely in their building. So my role becomes more of an off of the facilities and more of the instruction is the shift.
Does, Frank, does that include facilities too? Does that, and operations, does that include overseeing the snow, the...
Kinders, so weathering.
All of that stuff as well?
It's much like what we had in 2014-15 when we had a facilities director at that point. We had, I had to, remember that night with Sam Honaker, called, grass company, maybe Mrs. Spott or Dickie Ed, he's calling that. Right now, if there's a snow that didn't get plowed or something, or if it's salted appropriately or grass, I need a hearing from the administrative team or from Karen, and then I'm liaising with those contractors.
Brian, why do you, when I, this is, you know?
When I started in the district, we were at $370,000 structural problem, so we slowly shifted away at that, with the ultimate goal of getting to zero. So that was just one of the budget discussions that, with the current system, like the time it moved to the energy management system, the old system, Sam was looking, I have to go manually reset every system, and some of that can be done electronically, very pure and happen at home.
We had forbidden use of someone in that spot, on your toes. Before, they, yeah, and so, that became the superintendence, and then when we, when we did with Sam, it was looking to try to relieve Brian, it's kind of similar to what he's saying now, and Sam did it for a year.
He did a year, then the year after, the second year, he became the custodial supervisor for the Ian Burton, you know, and it, part of that process was, we needed to invest the focus of plenty of resources in classroom teachers' hands, we did science the first year, now, of buildings, so that, very focused on working structurally, having those conversations. We trained class, all the classroom teachers, I know we got a few that should get a train and classroom structures, work with it as part of our evaluation, and it's shown by our steady on these scores. And most recently in February, for last, again, they created, right, two years prior, through over a five-year period, we became one of the top ten schools in the state, which showed significant improvement. For a great reading, it's significantly changed from, from nearing the bottom to the top, how do you maintain it? So a lot of that conversation has to be the principal driven, because they're the ones in the building, every single day they see the, what goes on in the classroom, they know how to address that, so if we put some structure in place for resources, it's gonna be digging through, it's what, what comes, may, what goes, this will, this will, this will change from that.
So Brian, is it intended that this facilities person would be a full-time person?
That would be, that would be what, be the...
A full-time person? You're on full-time.
All right, you're on full-time. For a district our size, based on numbers, square footage, and so forth, and talking with the ISP, salary range, whether Ian Burton paid Sam at the time, made that, so the director was 50,000 dollars a class, I went on the highest budget, I expect to be, yeah, fine.
Can you talk a little bit, Brian, about, I mean, you just talked about the steady progress that's happened, that's happened with the curriculum director in place? So, so can you talk a little bit about how you envision that, that progress really being, and you, you talked a little bit, but I guess, you know, that, if you're thinking that progress has happened with that position and, and someone doing that work, how are you really envision it working without that position being present?
I think it's been a combination of the curriculum director, both the principals in the building, particularly the principal, I don't mean to discount any of the U student, because they are all, it's part of the conversation, it is primarily the principals that are doing it. It's been an ongoing conversation during K-12, looking at things, we know math is an issue in this district. So having the conversation about what we're doing, that the elementary model has gone on, and our Sharpsome meeting has gone on, the conversation that the curriculum director has had with various administrators, my role becomes much more part of that conversation in, in the change of duties. Part of it is, is the, we've got some, to say, my role's gotta change from more, to be more instructional rather than non-instructural.
Did you say you're picking up most of those duties, or is it just gonna be divided between the principals and you, and figure out who's doing what?
I think in some cases, it's gonna be a swap for me, from non-instructural to someone to go to district level stuff, such as, you know, I gotta look at consolidated application of our district-wide school. There still has to be someone in the district level coordinating that, but each of the buildings has a piece of that. There's a coordinating app, ever right now, we are collecting information on professional developer question next year. So at some point, that's gathered from the buildings, and that's gotta be consolidated, consolidated in one application. So that's where my conversation's gonna fall, the principals and that. What do we, what are we looking at K-12? Not much different than I see Mr. Burkmire's current collection of stuff, but I am gonna be much more active than that.
So you're picking up...
There are certain things that I look, that I have to pick up, just by the nature of the topic. There are some things, such as, when we look at, I'll just use curriculum and social studies, I'm relying on the expertise of the building principal and the staff who keeps that content area, look and evaluate those materials. Also, it's gotta come to me, regardless of whether it goes to a curriculum director or a principal, but it's gotta come to me with statements, but I need to be able to have that conversation with staff, say, if they want that, and we can't give them that because we have the dollar figure, what's the best, next best thing we want to give them?
Brian, if you're asking us to improve this, are you going to be committing, to involve yourself in the curriculum, or to the point that you could justify committing a full-time position just to handle everything that's been being moved lately?
The operations, that is a, I'm in the object, this, this, and I, I know staff, I'm only taking from, I'm not saying that staff in the district cannot also pay 110%, but this position, because of the operating, most of the stuff that I hear, that'll make it, I'm emailing stuff, that we can just, because there's not time to, to get done. So if I have operation, and it's part of the lag, and I think if you ask any staff members in this district, there's been a lag, because if I have a bee problem, I'll just use that example, probably the best example, and I need to call it an exterminator, it comes to me, or Pam, if I'm not in the district seeing one, there may be a couple of days before I contact Rose Exterminator to get out there and solve the problem, or these would go right to the bee. That is that person's job, is to make sure our buildings are safe, that our locks are working, our lights are on, supplies are ordered, it's maintained. Core day, we do painting every year, you know, core day with the contractor who does the painting, say, okay, I want these rooms done, when are they gonna be done? Right now, that's me. And I ask the building, kind of, what is their wish list, if you will, in terms of painting, sometimes I can get it to them, in terms of office painting, or classroom painting, sometimes I can't. It's just prioritizing the, the dollar figure, that's really what that facility first does. My first year, I didn't do anything, to be honest, that was all Sam did, and he tends to be that every week for about an hour, just to, they, they, for anything that's, that's gonna be potential large ticket item, proactive, you know? Just, just coordinating inspections, fire signature inspections, the creature inspections, the furnace inspections every year, the building walkthroughs. Currently, every other day, I'm doing, I'm doing the building walkthrough at, at the one, makes it, no broken pipes, no vandalism, and stuff, you know? So, so I'm shifting those duties to the facility, but I also gotta pick up, I know my role of coordinating to that next level, I gotta be much more active in the curriculum, in structural. Which may mean I'm doing more walkthroughs of buildings, I may be more in the classroom, so I'm gonna give my two cents to the administrative, but therefore, we're gonna have that conversation much like we did in the first year.
As far as the contract itself, we've already not long ago to, to agree minimally employ a number of different positions that are recommended to contract again, as it's tonight, to approve adding the facilities director and strike it with the curriculum.
I would just ask that, rather than strike it, that we put the language at a degree that, beginning a certain date, that we're not going to, we agree not to have that position to the base until we mutually re-identify. Things have changed since we've done, we did the contract a couple of years, or a year, a couple of months ago. There's a movement in staff. I don't know where I'm gonna find you guys, 109,000, without completely cutting, and I could say right here, cut all counselors, we solve the problem, but is it the best that you can give? Create an output. Class sizes are rated at order where they're around 25 to 27, there are some that are higher, especially some unique courses, without cutting, because we could cut programs, not run, I'm just making this up, because first, we can cut criminal justice, but I gotta put those kids somewhere, so I'm gonna force kids into classes that they don't want, or I'm gonna create another expense, and have them do a role to classes, and now we gotta make a new budget there, so. We have, in the last four years, and I think a lot of it has been in conversation, we have tightened our staffing, and I believe if tight, we can get it without cutting programs for kids. We're at a point now where we've eliminated almost a $40,000 deficit, we have not cut any other than elementary Spanish, we don't find a person, person, we haven't cut any programs for kids, we've added programs, we've added after-school activities for kids, restructuring to them. We have a contract in place with the teachers for next year, that has costs, the reduction of the energy bond, helping pay for any of the costs, so that money's just... of the energy bond, helping pay for any of the costs, so that money's just shifting from one account to the other. We've got a contract with the administrators through June of nineteen, so there's some stuff that they would, whether it's a half-stuff or an off-schedule. We're in negotiations with the food service and the bus drivers, those contracts are not settled, the air program, I believe, is settled through, I think, one more year. What I'm trying to position is, you know, all of our bargaining units have given to help the district over the years, whether it's furlough days, whether it's taken reductions or change in the contract. At this point, there's nothing else to cut unless they're going to say, cut a program to give, to address any increases they're going to want in the contract. Now, the benefit is, if we are off on our projection, because we get more kids, more dads, like that speak up in this community, we have more of those families that choose Richmond, it's only going to be a benefit of us. And then at some point, if we feel that it's important to look at it, we had a conversation at one point about doing a half-time curriculum, half-time special ed director, putting it to one. Having half-time positions is very difficult to build, and not possible unless you're going to find a retire, rehire from an administrative perspective.
My point in asking the question, Brian, was two months ago, the curriculum director position was absolutely necessary in the success of the district. And we're here two months later, and that position is totally dispensable. So, I don't, my question is whether it's absolutely necessary that we add this position to the contract, the special ed director position in the contract, or whether we even just create this position without having specifically added to the contract? The years having this position, we decided it would be necessary, and we'll have to be open to contract, amend the contract. Is it really necessary to do that, just create this position and agree with the time being enough to fund?
Prior to me asking for that in my contract, those positions, this board had the option of eliminating all those positions. There's nothing I can think of, oh, you eliminate all of this. The reason why I asked it was because I believe if you get back in this organization, those positions are critical. Do I believe the curriculum director is critical? Absolutely. But I don't know, I'm at, well, I'm at the end of ideas to fix the budget structure without cutting out. If we want to fix it some other way, we can do that, keep the curriculum addresses, but I don't know where we're going to get without cutting out. It's, I guess, it's, it's a, I think the timing runs, because I'm making the assumption, obviously, if it's settled, it will ultimately be the curriculum or our directors. So, I make the assumption he must still be in the organization.
And I also think, two months ago, and I don't know where, Brian never said he thought that the curriculum director position was, what was the word you used?
Necessary.
Necessary. I believe, I believe if we really look at it as a board, two months ago, we were talking then, we were looking at things being the same positions that we needed, and the reality is, two months later, Mrs. Mushon is retiring, we did not know she was the re, lots of things happen, budgetary things happen, and you have to look at where we're at, what we can do, and to be able to say that we want to remove this position, and our administrators are capable, curriculum people, Brian is extremely capable, so, in order to save money, to not lose programs or anything else, this is the position. I don't know, never did he say it wasn't necessary, and I don't believe that it's not a necessary position, but I believe that what we want to do, what he's looking to do right now is absolutely necessary right now.
And I'm all for saving money, my question is just whether we need to add this position as one of those listed positions in the contract?
I think when that language was voted on in December, it was clear that what Brian was stating, a support team that he needs to be able to do his work, and the majority of us were in agreement, that it's important for him to be able to articulate that, and to be written down in the contract, a support team, he needs to be able to have to do his job. Things change, budgets are always fluid, and when you're dealing with a budget that is ninety percent people, that means that's fluid, right? So, I think it's still important for that language to be present in a contract that says, this is the support team that supports and enables his job.
Wasn't the positions that were created totally dependent on the budget anyway, whether it stayed, or whether they weren't renewed, always depended on what the outcome of the budget was? Prior to it being put in my contract, it was at the room floor. By the entry in the contract, the board's committed that when we start the budget process, these are automatic. Finance person, someone to run payroll, someone to run, pay the bills, the councilman, payroll, my administrative assistant, I don't know all the folks that I have, but those were, but prior to that, you could easily have said, Brian, we're going to cut the director of special education and give it to whoever, or take it on yourself. You always have that ability, but I just asked in my contract, not asking for any raise, could we commit to this staffing so that I can run the district?
Given as Tracy mentioned, the fluid nature of budgetary process, I just feel like adding these positions and writing to the contract, it's harder to do fluid, it's harder to change positions, harder to adapt.
But it's a benefit, it's already a part of this contract.
And we're adding another position to that contract, which?
And eliminating one that's twice the cost, almost twice the cost, and in addition to that, you show good rigor in delivering those options, that you're going to eliminate some costs from that. So, I've become definitely making decisions, and that's not the end of the school this year, keeping the students centered and thinking of them.
I think you were right, so I'm in agreement on the changes that you're pulling, Brian, so I don't have a problem with that. I think, what I take away from what Brian's saying is, I trust that Brian's going to do what he needs to do, he's going to come to us with the positions that he thinks he needs, and I'm sure that, it's just a lot of extra steps, like if next year, there's a different position because of people shifting or we are preparing, then we have to go back into session and see if we can, then the contract, then come back out, discuss, and vote. It just seems like a lot, but it could just be a simple discussion of, I'm recommending this and this, and we say yes, and that one we want to protect.
I just reiterated to the board, if you go back to June 2016, when the question was asked of me, do you want this position, or should we cut after-school activities for kids? I'm not going to say cut after-school activities for kids, that was the public relations, the relations document. So, I chose to cut it, figure it out, luckily, our enrollment for change, and we had some other things that we were looking at, that's the position I was in. I'm not going to cut for kids, unless the board are telling me that's the only way we can solve this structural problem. If I give, if we can cut off all athletics, there's two hundred thousand dollars right there. I could say we'll lose kids, I could say eliminate transportation, there's three hundred dollars, we will lose kids, cut all after-school, we can do these positions, there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That means robotics is gone, student council is gone, yearbook's gone, green closet, if we can do that, it's going to affect kids.
And I didn't think the purpose of this conversation was to rehash whether the amendment, the fourth amendment, or amendment four is in fact valid. We're only here having a conversation as to whether the language needs to be changed. So, I hear that the direction that the two of you are wanting to take the conversation is whether the fourth amendment is even valid in this contract or not. That's already been decided.
Totally correct. I'm wondering whether we need, if Brian wants to agree to strengthen curriculum director from the, from the contract, and give him the flexibility to create this facilities director position, that's wonderful, that's a nearly, that's a great, I don't see the need to add another position to the contract, thus restricting our ability to change that position in the future.
But what you're saying is, but that is, the idea, the whole idea of done the amendment doesn't allow for Brian to have the language that says, these are the people, this is the team that I need to have. I think, I think Brian's point is valid in what he says, but I really think it's conversation that happens, needs to happen down later on when we amend the agenda, and I think that's where your point needs to come in. Because if you, if you don't, if you're, if you're not, if you don't believe that the, that the curriculum director should come out and the facilities director should go in, then later on down in the meeting when we talk about actually bending the contract, that's what, that's what.
I saw yours, Margaret, we're actually at the end of my, we're talking about the budget of the time.
Right.
So, you're ready to stop?
So, I, from the budgetary perspective, if we, if we go down this road of making the change, will help us get to a zero structural problem very closely. The other two items from a budgetary perspective, and I put them in backwards order on your things, like my, all I called it, versus freshman sports. In your document, it is ten-four-eight. In December, Mr. Reinhardt presented an update on freshman sports. Just scroll to the second page, which is, we're back, this is the exact same document we got in December. So, when you look at freshman sports, it cost us total seventeen thousand, roughly seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen, let's go eighteen thousand, two around numbers for sake, and we raised about ten thousand in revenue, whether it's pay to participate, gate fees, et cetera. At the end of this year, we have no money left for freshman sports. Because freshman sports, because some of them started before, the conversation that I would ask the board to entertain is, do we just assume in the budget that we are going to pay for freshman sports, pay to participate, that students will pay to participate, collect the gate receipts, et cetera, and then we make a decision on whether a freshman sport will run or not based on enrollment? Currently, Mr. Reinhardt was able to give this to me, in the BWAC for football, with K-Pac leaving and North Branch coming into our league next year, there are only five of the eight teams in the BWAC that have freshman football. There are, again, I'm assuming K-Pac leaving and North Branch coming. For volleyball, there are seven that have a freshman sports. Boys' basketball, there will be, with North Branch coming in, as of now, there will be eight boys' basketball. Currently, K-Pac does not, but North Branch does. Currently, only four teams operate girls' basketball. It's offered, but we don't run it, they're running against the numbers. For one of them, we did not run a girls' basketball, we offered it, and we had to make the introduction. For freshman baseball, there are three teams that have baseball in the BWAC, with North Branch being one of them, coming in next year. So, if it wasn't for North Branch, only two of the teams, among the Frenchmen, that have freshman baseball. So, the challenge we have is, is, again, I know the board's direction was for parents to raise money, and I forgive you, I don't remember the exact year, it was several years ago, the challenge we have is getting parents to raise the money, and by the end of this year, that account will pretty much be zeroed out. So, if the tendency is to run freshman sports, my recommendation would just be, assume the thousand dollar cost in the budget, that we lose in revenue, which is what the boosters are giving us, just run freshman sports. And then run it, may start with numbers, so I would sit down with Mr. Reinhardt, and we would establish a minimum, so football needs the loving guys on the team, or other players, excuse me, I just got these other players. And we say the minimum is fifteen, I don't know the numbers, but we have set a minimum that has to be on the team for it to run. Much like we did with girls' basketball, with the girls' basketball freshman this year, you know, we had very few on it, maybe five or six.
We didn't have enough.
We didn't have enough.
We didn't have enough to make it where, if someone would have gotten injured, that we, you know, we would have had like some.
We had six, and one got injured, and five were playing the whole time.
So, we didn't have a ninth grade girls' basketball?
We did not, this year.
We offered it, but we didn't have enough.
And how many ninth grade boys' basketball players were there, do you know?
We have probably fifteen. It was thirteen, where people go to, sorry, thirty. I can get to, I didn't ask the director, just understand what leads, because our option is, if we don't run freshman sports, then those students have the obstacle. I can change your person.
How many, do you know how many, how many are in the ninth grade baseball team?
Let me see a blue.
I think volleyball, they had a, they had a soccer, yeah, they had a soccer. Or just being at the games, they had a big number. But can, can we get that information? So, so what you're saying is potentially it would be a seventeen, eighteen thousand dollar increase to athletics? If that's what, that's what cost us last year, running, but there would have to be an eighty thousand dollar issue.
Offset by the eleven thousand. Offset by the, roughly ten thousand in revenue for the pay to participate and the gate receipts and the bills, so, that's a net of about eight thousand dollars.
And eight thousand really is basically coaches' salaries and?
Well, it's, it's the difference, if you add up the expenses, which is coaches' salaries, officials, transportation, when we pay parents, we give them a credit back off they've worked off, rather than paying, let's say, the hundred for talent fee, they worked four times, we give them, let's say, the hundred and five, that check we give back to them after the workout. So, that totals for freshman sports, while seventeen thousand, seven hundred thousand. From gate receipts to, oh, here, to pay to participate fees, that's what we generate, it's about ten thousand. We started the year, right to the top, with twelve hundred dollars sitting in that account. Twelve hundred dollars, twelve hundred dollars to come off, the seventeen thousand. Back out, what we projected revenue, you're getting down to about, for this case, it's about sixty-three hundred. That's what the boosters have given us checks for. But that check is based on the boosters running a fundraiser, which I believe was last August, Cal Chingo. The challenge is getting that fundraiser.
There's no ninth grade softball, it's just J.B. versus.
Current. But I've always said, if there's interest, we'll run it from a high line of client, we just don't have enough interest for that softball. And we haven't for a couple of years.
We've never.
At least the five, I don't know.
We've never, we haven't had a freshman softball for as long as I can think of.
Probably thirty years.
Yeah.
I would just like to know the numbers, how many, how many kids that, that has affected?
Yep. I will get that number to you, Brian, but that is an option, because the challenge we're having is that we want to be self-sufficient. I cannot say that I have dollars in our freshman sports account to start to fall off, with money to run football and volleyball. In case for freshman sports, we would need seventy-three hundred dollars in expenses, it costs us forty-nine hundred dollars to run freshman football, and it costs us sixteen hundred dollars to run volleyball, so it's a total between the two of fifty-three hundred dollars. My additional three hundred dollars in the account, like I said, we went through a qual, like, we've involved zero. I know Mr. Reinhardt has been working with one of our parents, one of our secretary, trying to put a fundraiser together, they're just trying to, 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 I'm trying to go live with at the time, I think it was two years ago, might have been three years ago, from the Darkson Board.
The fundraising, the fundraising efforts were supposed to be parent-directed, if that was how, if it was going to be funded, that's how it, not, not school.
So, that would be something that would be an expense in the budget if we want to, I guess, end this yearly conversation of freshman sports with the caveat that we establish what minimums need to know for each one.
Can we get those school sports information? Numbers and the cost. First, fourth grade, wait, an hour?
Hour.
At least an hour. Transportation costs and stuff.
We currently only transport during the week, now that we have transport on teams that may be on the weekends, or it's only during the weekend, basically, but. I will get you the accounts of the high school, and then I will work on the middle school accounts and the costs. The other item for the, the other item, which is in your packet, item 10A, is transportation. We currently, in the transportation policy, we define the transportation stops as we establish a stop in the neighborhood, see how many kids live in this area, and through our transportation software, we establish a stop. Overtime, we bring past and overtime, we have established other stops that aren't necessarily in the neighborhood. We've established stops in the past, now currently, at a home daycare. Because a person having a home daycare call transportation, said, I'd like to stop. We currently have a stop at Treasured Friends. At some point, a conversation happened at Treasured Friends, recently, or probably several years ago, that asked for a stop there, so the loss of their route would create that stop. Those particular stops would not be normally what I would establish stops there. I believe we had this conversation in August, and we said we'd bring it back during the budget. So, as a way of trying to come to a middle ground, again, I'm not necessarily set on this, this structure, or interested in the structure, but for those stops that would qualify in transportation, that are not student normal stops, a house, do you create a, for lack of better, create a bus stop saying, all right, we'll create that stop for you, but there's a fee for it? In talking to Don Denell, returning, conceptually, he was good with this, he was not good with it. A student goes at a house, flows out on Pound Road, and that would've been normally a stop for that child because of our transportation guide. We cannot charge that stop for that student. That is clear, you can't do that. But I'm talking about stops that are normally, they're not our, the kids don't live there, so they wouldn't show up on our system to create a stop there unless someone told us to say, hey, I know kids that go to Richmond, or, or they're coming up, stop there.
So, if my niece and nephew's staying at my house, or, you know, I watched my niece and nephew, and they were getting picked up at my house, would that supply for you?
If you, if that area was in the transportation zone, and they're not your kids, they're to take care of something, you know, a bunch of, you call up and you ask that, or, home day cares, if you license daycareers.
Wouldn't that, if it's within the district, wouldn't that just be a stop? So, like, let's say my kids are staying with my mother-in-law, who lives in Richmond, and she's my sitter, but she's on, she's in Richmond, and she's not at Walkman's, you would pick up my kids from her?
The stops are created by your home address.
Not, not your babysitter. But if there's, if there's like a bus stop there, anyone picking up their kids, my kids would use that, right?
If there's an existing stop, if that bus stop was created because of the addresses in there, we'd have it all the time. Kids, parents fill out a waiver, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they go home on the zebra bus, and on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they go home on the captain's because of that situation. I'm talking about stops that we aren't creating, that we will put on the route because of a request that came in.
Brian, do other, are there other districts that do something similar?
I am not aware of any district in the hometown that does.
Does it own transport to businesses, probably, right?
The routing system does not, I can't say a hundred that they don't, but I can say that's not a practice that they do. I thought we go, so, just, I mean, kind of, if you already remember this, forgive me, but, just to recap, I was planning on putting this forward, we had the conversation in August, I chose not to move forward with changing it because I didn't, I didn't want to create ways that started the school year, we had a good year starting, and everything was possible. And so, I opted to have kids who want to do this in the future. What we are right now is, we are, we have, if any parent asks us, who lives in transportation zone, I am on the stop. We have nothing that says, no, we don't need it, we can't, we have to create a stop. We set the practice. Because we have stops, whether it's Treasured Friends, or whether it's a previous daycare that we have, we have, created a stop. A parent calls, they've created a stop.
Brian, when we ask, you have some fees based on mileage from another RE, South RE RE. How much does it cost the district to add a stop?
Oh, our, our transportation cost is four dollars and fifteen cents a mile. That's what we, if I look at our, all of our costs in Grand Bay, oil, chain, mile, every, what the cost of payroll, it's four dollars and fifteen cents a mile. Basically, what I did was, I took, okay, if I've got to drive a quarter mile, it's just four dollars, just saving even numbers here, it's not a dollar.
Yes.
Morning, a dollar, and the afternoon, two dollars. Multiplied by one hundred and eighty school days, there's three hundred and sixty dollars. I've got to drive a bus, an extra quarter mile. Three hundred and sixty. And then the difference in there, and it was an arbitrary number, there was, okay, there's going to be a notification, we've got to do a billing to that school for that business or whatever, or home daycare, to grant a agent employee, and.
But how would you figure out on the other end what you're saving and not dropping out those people at their points? Would you have to?
Well, it is, well, also you're going to drive less miles, so when we do our bid report in June, our buses will drive less miles, so our costs will be less. For every stop we make, we are adding miles to our costs.
I don't, I mean, I don't know if that's always the case, is it? You're basically, if, if I'm going from point A to B to C, and B is eliminated, because now B is going to someplace by A, then you don't have to stop. You're, I mean, you would still go.
If I'm going from A to B to C, if that's the process of driving from A to C, I've got this additional call.
Right, perhaps you might, but I'm, literally, that's what I'm thinking. There might be times when you're actually driving less, but if you've got to drop off seven kids at point A, that means that's six stops that you won't have to make. But that, that's just one question.
Right, you have, you have a hundred and eighty in the morning, and a hundred and eighty in the afternoon, less times you're stepping on the brakes, that's less brake, that's less brake cost mechanic. It's one stop in isolation isn't going to make a break tonight, okay? But over time, we can potentially have multiple stops we could.
Then what would you, what would you call an identifiable benefit? And could you put a number on that? If you've got something that has an identifiable benefit, and you say it affects ten stops, then these figures could be way.
Identifiable benefit for us is those kids are coming to Richmond. But I'm taking it, if I make it as a stop, those kids are coming to Richmond.
Yeah, why wouldn't an identifiable benefit be them going to another daycare facility, if that's where their parents want them to go?
That would be the parent's choice. They're sending them there, the parents get their kids there. We, we provide daycare, and the conversation that happened back in September, or obviously whatever that meeting was, when people came, and the treasured friends, and the items that they said that they were looking, that they needed, we, we have met those by the summer program that we're doing, that your kids, you have your daycare, your year-round daycare, all of that. I just don't know why we are interested in transporting people to a competing system.
I, I don't know if that's the right.
Are we comfortable?
The question was at the time with that meeting, that the issues were the year-round, by being able to have your kids something all year round, the Richmond daycare ended when the school year ended. I will tell you that the parents, that's, those were the exact words that they said. So, we, we are meeting that. We, we have provided, we have reached out and greeted this thing with the city that we're doing, so we have, we have responded to the issues that those parents brought that night.
I have seen firsthand on social media, people say about our summer care program, they are unable to utilize it because we don't grow young enough, and because they have younger siblings that they also have to account for. As a mother of small children, I am not going to drop my infant off at this daycare, and my six-year-old off at this place. I don't have time anymore, I gotta get to work.
And I absolutely, I get that, I respect that. That's, why is that our problem?
I wouldn't say it's our problem, but I would say it doesn't, I don't think it hurts. I think it helps the families in this district. We are a small community, we are all about family. I think it's helpful, and it is nice of us to be able to do it. I don't think that it hurts us that much financially that we can't have stuff.
But you, but you open the door to so much more of a home daycare, someone who's got a home daycare in Canterbury, someone who's got a daycare here.
But if we were to put a number on that identifiable benefit, you know, if parents decide that this is an identifiable benefit, and then the school district says, all right, well, we've got to have ten people stopping there. I think that would close the door then from putting them in, you know, one person going here, one person going here. Pick a number, what, what, what number do we break even?
Many of our stops are, can be single stops, it's supposed to be a permanent reward, just the rules of, our, our group stops, our Lake Angeles and in-town stops. So, the number of kids at that stop, I don't think is a fair number necessarily, huge. We do, it's a lot of single stops that we're dropping off, and that changes every year.
Brian, how, how unusual, what that, you said the daycare contract, you might have asked you, did you create your stop, is that right?
No, I, I have never been down to buy any daycare.
We just, when, how do we get the practice?
Someone called transportation, I said, sure, I'll put a stop.
Okay, so, transportation approved this, how long ago?
Nine years before I got here.
So, it's been a few years, and since then, have we had any other requests like this? Like that?
We had home daycare requests, which are different. Our home daycare has changed based on, there's still a lot of home daycare.
Do you know how many people were new, are you just going to provide?
How many staffs you got from right now, currently? Is it a lot? Currently, as I know of today, without looking through the entire transportation log, it's one.
That's true.
Credit runs.
Because I'm just thinking, if we can, if we can modify this any kind of evidence by you bringing it to us tonight, we talked about it at the beginning of the year, if it becomes out of control or at the end, we can always revisit it, but at the current level that people are trying to utilize it, it doesn't seem to me that it's a problem on the district resources. In my opinion, it's servicing kids that go to Richmond, it doesn't appear to be a significant burden. If that changes with the amount of requests that come in all of a sudden, I don't think we can go in and look at it for another year, but right now, with the current standing, I, I just don't see that as a problem.
Can this be grandfathered in?
I don't think we want to, right?
No, I mean, the, what the policy does, second daddy, non-residential bus stops, this one currently exists and has existed for several years.
It's non-residential.
How many years have, how many years have we been dropping people off here? So, for at least four years.
Going back to the confidentiality of services, in addition to what Sarah said, except you never sit with them in the summer, is the childcare program, does the childcare program at school accept kids that are not in school?
They're a staple, you have to be, it lives for, for a certain person to be in our private license.
So, it's in my funding, it appears to be in two thousand a morning, two thousand a night. Is childcare program open next summer? Currently, is the childcare program open during Christmas break?
If this, I'm just bringing, I'm not going to answer.
Yeah, I, I don't know that.
Where I'm going with this, I committed to you, I would bring it back to a discussion. If you want to, do it. If you don't, then let me know, although you are going to open a can of worms from the perspective, I need to be fair, that any home daycare that falls within our transportation, if we do it for one, we do it for all. And I'm fine, I can make it work.
So, we really should advertise that we do it.
I, I will do it.
Why don't we advertise that we just drop off daylights?
You know, I, I'm here to.
We just advertise, and provide, and provide a service.
Transport levels.
We just don't have to provide.
President Nelson, can you, can we get a sense of order back here? So, we're asking questions, I think the board deserves answers, I'm sorry if you don't like the tone, but we can't come to a conclusion.
Who didn't like the tone, Mr. Ward?
I believe the superintendent said he's not going to answer questions anyway.
Because you're asking me questions, and I don't have the data in front of me.
Hold on, hold on. The question was asked, that was start, let's start talking about daycare to work. The question in front of us tonight is the transportation and its respective treasure friends. Do we want to, Brian was going to eliminate it, but because there were people that came forward, and it was real close to the beginning of the school year, he decided to let it go. And we said we would discuss it come budget time. That's, that's the discussion. So, there's two points here. We either eliminate anyone who is a non-resident, any competitive business, we do not transport based on Brian's interpretation and how this transportation policy reads, or if the majority of the board thinks that they would like to transport and open it up to any kind of business, then there's this fee schedule. Or if the majority of the board wants to do this to any competing person, any business, they can do it without a fee schedule. That's really the direction, because it's, it's budgetary, we're either going to charge people, or we're not going to charge them, or we're not going to transport.
Is there a way to look at the, at the fees that are being charged and adjust that?
That was just my first step.
Yeah, no, this is just him, he's throwing this out there.
All right, so there's, so there's wiggle room in that.
Well, absolutely.
So, let, so that we can, so that we can maintain some order. Are we, does the majority of the board want to continue transporting students down to treasured friends? Is there a majority of the board that wants to do that?
I think the language has to be broader than that, because this really is.
Oh, try your.
Not, I'm sorry, you're right. Not about one place.
It's about.
The concept of creating stops of places that are not residents.
Correct.
It's, it's that concept.
Does the board want to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
I own a business, anything that benefits me, I pay for.
Brian, how many school choice kids?
Wait, we don't have, wait, we're maintaining order, let's let everybody have a chance to speak, we did. Tracy.
I'm interested in transporting to residential places, not businesses.
Sarah.
I am interested in transporting if it is a business that is acting as a residential for that child, because that's where that child is staying that morning, because their home is not an option, then yes.
I'm not interested. The majority of the board is not interested in continuing or to transport students to non-residential.
I think Kyle said, I'm, you just are more for the, is that correct?
Did you, did I misread you, Kyle?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
When you said you would pay for it, that's what I meant. As a business, I'd pay for it.
So just to get clarification on this, are you saying that these fees wouldn't apply or that we're simply just saying...
We're not talking about fees. We are not interested in doing anything. The majority of the board is not interested in transporting to any non-residential the way Brian interpreted the policy back in the beginning of the school. Correct?
I have some other questions. Are we gonna go through the rest of this, or?
The rest of what?
Of this transportation.
No, Dave, but I just said...
No, not about this issue.
What else about transportation?
I had a question about the installation of surveillance cameras. Is that something that we agreed to or is that something that you're thinking?
We do.
It's our idea.
It's our idea. Any new buses that we get come with cameras in the next bond theory? We'll leave five buses that still have VHS tapes and convert those systems over to the digital system. All buses would have video cameras on. And we utilize them. There's problems on the buses.
If I could, ask just two quick questions, and that is, how long are those videotapes maintained for? From the day that transportation happens, you maintain it for a week or something along those lines?
Legally, and I'd have to double check that, legally, we have to keep them for thirty days. After thirty days, they can be overgrown. I'd have to verify that, to be honest with you.
And is there anybody that is routinely reviewing these?
We only review the videotapes when there is an issue. Nobody that watches them.
That was all I had on that.
Brian? Is that it, project?
That's it, project.
So you're gonna have ninth grade?
I'm bringing up your sports numbers, middle school numbers back.
More information on respect to...
In the description.
Brian, next question. When do you want my treasured friends to walk away? If I anticipate the families that just signed their kids up for preschool and turned around, that may have some different choices that they want. So why do you let them? So we know for losing students, you call them tomorrow or Wednesday? Because as a parent of someone who might be counting on that for them to get there next year, that may change my decision in my condition of temperature basis. So I just ask that you contact them.
I don't think your time is up.
Because I would probably be asking them, I'll provide that customer service to their customers. Hopefully, you don't provide customer service. We won't provide that now. Wow. I know, right? Wow.
I just hope that it's not too many of these, of course, at the school.
I'm sure that it won't be. I have great faith that it won't be. Okay, moving on. Public comments. It's a portion of our meeting where if there's someone who would like to address the board, they can do so. You can come up to the podium. There is a paper up there. You can leave your name and phone number if you have a question that needs answered. It's not a question and answer period, but if you do have a question, someone will get back with you. Anyone who would like to address the board?
Hello, for some of you that may not know me, my name is Nick Mathis. I'm the team captain for our high school robotics team and here with the eye of our mechanical captain, Luis Machado. And just to give you a little bit of update, this past weekend, we competed in Michigan State Championship. As I came myself, this is Michon for the approval for the Orange Day. We are fortunate enough to qualify for the world championship this weekend in Detroit. So it was a pretty huge accomplishment for us. So by doing this, obviously with the support from you guys for hotels and food for states and food for, again, for worlds, we appreciate that. We want to give you a thank you for that, to be able to continue supporting us and that. Also, I got the chance to sit down and talk, well, not sit down, but I got the chance to talk with Governor Rick Snyder and we had a conversation, because we are out of the five, six hundred school districts out of Michigan. Out of the forty-five, we are one of the forty-five districts in Michigan that has all of the first robotics programs K through twelve. So the junior FLL, FLL, FTC, and MRC. We have, we're awarded a certificate of recognition as the hereby granted to Richmond Community Schools for participating in the full first progression of K-12 programs during the 2017-18 season and it's signed by Governor Rick Snyder. Other than that, I know we'll probably be here after the school year for our triple moment, so I'll kinda give you an update for Worlds once we get that. But if you guys are interested, we'll be competing Thursday and Friday at Cobal Hall in Detroit. And then Saturday, also at Cobal Hall, and if we are to go far enough, we will be competing at Ford Field. So obviously, it kinda depends on how things work out, but Thursday and Friday, Cobal Hall, Saturday, Cobal Hall. We have morning and then afternoon, hopefully at Ford Field if we get there.
So it's in the morning, Thursday and Friday?
Thursday, Friday, we're competing all day.
Like, it starts what time?
Starts at...
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. We'll be there until five thirty, six o'clock.
Is that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, same start time?
Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we start at seven thirty and then we will do our inter-divisional rounds until about one thirty. And then if we are to be fortunate enough to win our division, we'll move on to the world championship quarterfinals and semifinals, hopefully. If we already get that far, at Ford Field, starting at six thirty.
Six thirty and nine?
Yep.
Well, I'm really hopeful that the Times Herald or the Voice newspaper does an article on us, because this is really great for...
Yeah, they actually wrote, the Times Herald wrote an article on us the, right before our Marysville competition. Right before, I can go ahead and send you guys the email, the link, when I get a chance. But they actually came out and they were here videotaping the robot and stuff, so it was pretty cool. I also am in contact with The Voice. They're gonna write an article for us after the world championship. I'm also in conflict with the school newspaper.
Terribly impressive, really. You guys have done such a great job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Something that just a few years ago was just a little flip on the map and you've just run it just so good for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You've done a great job. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Susan Slade, may I post you if I don't know a lot of you, but again, I'd like to thank you from the robotics team, I'm part of that. Boosers, we're not boosers, but part of the parents and it's a great club. My son, who's at Richmond, he's a freshman this year, he's on the robotics team, he's also on the trap team. So my concern, when you were talking about cutting freshman sports. Now, my son played baseball until this year. He isn't well-oiled, wouldn't have been happy to decided to go out for baseball. He wouldn't have qualified to be on the JV or the RCT, he's not that student or that athlete. So by cutting freshman sports, if he wanted to go to baseball, he wouldn't have been, because he, it's a non-cut sport, right? So if you cut the freshman sport, he wouldn't have been good enough to get on JV, so then he would be sitting at home. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed when you're thinking of cutting the freshman sports. Not only the total number of students, but the students that wouldn't necessarily then be able to play it all. Yes, I agree that the parents should fundraise, that's what I do all the time, with money for stuff. But that's something to think about when you're cutting the budget. And I know that you guys already voted on the transportation, but I was, I have to agree with what I've seen Sarah said. I get, I get why we don't wanna compete, you know, pick up a competitor. But you also could lose the students. So is the three hundred and fifty dollars, yes, as a business, they should pay for it. If I own a business, I would pay for it. But we have to think of the other end. What if four kids left the district because they found a place that they could transport from a different daycare? So now you're looking at basically, what, seven thousand a kid, approximately, that you lose for three hundred and fifty dollars? Or whatever the fee was. It's just a thought.
Thank you. Mr. Slater, are you coming up?
I am.
Okay.
Sorry.
I didn't know if you were walking out or...
No.
Okay.
John Slater, Richmond High School teacher and coach, and just done freshman sports. And I know you're not answering questions, but I thought we did a fundraiser, and Chris isn't here. I don't know if you could look into that. Wasn't there a fundraiser for the new, we did another one in August to apply? I mean, you know, I have to answer, but it's something to think about when you have discussion. I thought we did raise some money for the next round or whatever we could afford. And I do, I hate putting a number on it, but it does, if you lose one FTE, you're at a wash. If it costs eight thousand dollars and an FTE is seven thousand four hundred or whatever, you know, it's a wash. And I believe, you know, Brandon Day's always quoted me numbers about the number of kids that come here to play. And it's legit, and he can give you the stats on that. The kids have come over and will come to Richmond because we do have freshman sports. It's just something to talk about. What I really wanted to do, though, is come up here and thank Haley Fortuna, who's not here, but it's public, so thanks Haley. But she's such a wonderful student. You guys know that. I know you always need to have that said again, but she did such a great job to play. But just to stay here for, what has it been, three years or, three years, right?
Yeah.
Incredible, right? That's real dedication and I really appreciate that. And Deb, Michon announced her retirement today, so I'd just like to wish her the best. And just like to say that you've made me a better teacher and I think the whole high school staff would agree with that you've made us a better teacher and a better place. So thanks a lot.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. Next, Board of Education student report report. Haley could not make it tonight, but she sent me her stuff. So leave school. On April twentieth, the PTO passed out trees to all students to celebrate Earth Day. As Mr. Koshin said, tomorrow night is McStepnight at McDonald's from four to seven. On four twenty-seven, they are having three different assemblies, a true blue assembly, anti-bullying assembly, and a test prep assembly. Is that correct? The middle school, their final tour with fathers was a great success. They had it the morning before school on three twenty-nine. Several dads were able to be in attendance. The National Junior Honor Society held its annual Rainbow Connection fundraiser. Ms. Corby, you weren't the winner this year.
Mr. Hamlin.
Mr. Hamlin was the winner, had the most money donated in his name, and he got to be duct taped to the wall. And there were representatives from the Rainbow Connection at the assembly and they got the donation that day. Richmond Middle School Digital Talent Extravaganza was a few weeks ago with multiple entries. This is the Richmond Middle School Follies event, for those of you that are old school, know that. And Richmond Middle School has received grade school status. At the high school, best of luck to the robotics team as they head to Worlds this week in Detroit. Congrats to the little women cast in their show that they had last weekend. Our varsity girls soccer team is currently ranked fifteenth in the state. Congratulations to Ally Fissler for receiving vision one rating at state solo and solo and ensemble on April fourteenth. Prom is coming up, it is May fourth, at Alexander's in Marysville. This year's theme is Candyland. And there will be a spirit week next week in preparation for prom. Thank you, Haley. Next, Superintendent Legislative Update.
First, I'd like to follow this, Mr. Brian. You have every right to ask questions. I would just ask that if we ask a question, give you a chance to get the other team to respond, if the answer is correct. I don't know if you have enough time to follow this from the comment. Last Friday, the Richmond area Chamber of Congress held the elective officials breakfast forum. I had the distinct pleasure of going with Board Member Worth and four high school students, Terran Seija, Romansley, Anna Maxwell, and Haley Fortuna. It was an interesting event. They tied in with each of the speakers a little bit of history. They were celebrating Macomb County's two-hundredth anniversary. And so it gave a lot of tidbit historical effects about Macomb township and the different towns and cities that make up this area. So it was a great event, so I'm very thankful to the students and Mr. Worth for going and enjoying it. Haley said the play was this weekend. I had an opportunity to see it on Saturday. It was unbelievable. Voices that our kids have and the play was just outstanding, so who knows? James and the Johnny Peach is coming up in two weeks, but not this weekend, but the following weekend, May, I think it's fourth. It's Saturday, it's Sunday. The John Friday, it's Saturday, Sunday, and Friday is prom. So it's Saturday, Friday, May four, this prom, so it doesn't stick that Saturday. There'll be two performances each day. The kids will be working hard and it's really...
Okay. Next, items of interest for members of the board. Anyone?
I'd like to just reiterate what Brian said. The public elected officials breakfast on Friday was great. To hear the elected officials come and speak was just a real, real treat. Brian, you did a great job organizing it and I was so pleased. All four girls and talking with my friends at the ISD. This is, this is the next few years where we see more and more women getting involved in politics. And I thought it was just a great, great place for them to be there and really they did a great job. And I know that I'm not gonna go to sleep tonight unless I also apologize. I didn't intend any disrespect, Brian. My average gets up there, so sorry about that.
Anybody else?
I wanna congratulate CJ Wagner. He actually received a Macomb County Award of the Year. And that's quite an honor, because it was against a lot of larger division schools. And so I wanted to congratulate him. And I also wanted to congratulate the girls bowling team. All of the bowlers received academic scholar athletes.
Yeah, I went to the play too. Haley, of course, was phenomenal. It goes without saying, but the rest of the cast just did a great job. It was a good show. Anybody else? Okay, next, I need for a motion to go into closed session.
I need a motion to go into closed session for attorney appointing a new coach for...
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Tracy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
I'm all aye. We are going into closed session and we move it back. Here we have the session, nine fifty-five. Before we move on to action, I know I'm looking for a motion to amend the agenda for the approval of the Superintendent Contract Amendment Number Five. To add, make it sixteen G.
Make a motion to add action item sixteen G in reference to Superintendent Contract Amendment Number Five.
It's been moved and supported. Excuse me. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, that's added to the agenda. We move action item sixteen A, overnight approval of the varsity softball overnight trip. Coach Stewart was here a couple of weeks ago, did his presentation. And so this is a chance to approve it. There is a sample resolution.
Motion, sorry. I motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent approved the girls softball overnight trip to Pekinging as presented during the April ninth, twenty eighteen board meeting and listed in the attached documentation.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, the rule of resolution of support from home intermediate school district fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent approved the attached resolution in support of the Macomb Intermediate School District fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Second? Second. Send Tracy.
Yes.
Is that here?
Yes.
Okay. It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I am abstaining because I am an employee of the ISD, so I cannot vote. Motion carries. Next, approval of board policies 2410 prohibition of referral or assistance, 2414 reproductive health and family planning, and 2418 sex education.
Emotion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the attached board policies 2410 prohibition of referral or assistance, 2414 reproductive health and family planning, and 2418 sex education as presented on April 9th, 2018.
Sarah.
Yep.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries six to one. Approval of the expansion of the equestrian club.
We have received a request to expand our equestrian club high school program to include middle school. This request models the doctrine to have similar to what we did when we expanded the trap shooting from the high school to the middle school. Denise Altmark would be the middle school equestrian coach. They have one event that is on Saturday, June 2nd. So this would then put forward the equestrian club at the middle school. Cost for the club, there is no cost to the district. This is considered a club. And unlike bowling, which is considered a club, we only really support bowling when you get to the end for states. It may be this, all of these, their riding fees, as you can see in the backup, I believe it's $60 for one horse rider. If they enter another horse, it's $10, it would be paid by the student. We would not charge you free to participate, but they would become the Richmond Middle School equestrian.
Emotion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the expansion of Richmond equestrian club under the authority of the Michigan Dristal Lasting Force Mission Association to include Richmond High School and Richmond Middle School for students aged 6 and above. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of repairs to high school auditorium fire suppression system.
Before I get, I would just like to reach out and say thank goodness for all you people that have come. Very time consuming, a lot of meetings, the place that Brian represents, I appreciate what you did.
Excellent.
Oh, fabulous, yeah. Love you all.
We'll get out of it.
Yeah, high school fire suppression system. Our current system is in need of repair. While it is currently functional, the pump and some of the other areas need replacing. It is put back together, but it's not a long-term fix, so that we can continue using the auditorium. Through this process, we, I was able to gather a couple quotes. One of the quotes was extremely high. We started the process by contractor George Aug, construction company. I had worked with them in my previous district, so I asked a favor to come out. He brought his team out, really looked at it, inspected it, and saying, here's what you need. And then from that, I began contacting the different companies to get a quote on that. So my recommendation is, as I reported in the newsletter, because this has to get fixed, we started it, it would be a little bit better to be contacted by a protection corporate.
No motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize Conti fire protection along the sage make necessary repairs to fire suppression system in the high school auditorium. Court amount not to exceed $18,300 is indicated in the attached documentation.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
All right, sir.
So Conti, we're under some type of allowance for repairs on this after they put it in or what's the normal?
Yeah, there is a, I interrupted. They guarantee the labor for 12 months and the equipment is guaranteed so long as we have it annually inspected, which is one of the pieces that through this process, we realize we weren't doing it on a regular basis.
inspected by Conti?
It could be them, it could be P&amp;P Fire, it could be one of the other companies, George, John Green Company's done inspections for us. Doesn't have to be them. But there's an annual inspection that they got to turn the valves, make sure the water flows, the water goes back to the building, make sure it operates like it should. And parts in, the pump I believe is a 10-year warranty. The current system that's in there is 20 years old. It was built in 1987, it is in demand. And that's been out of work since then. Thank you.
Okay. Now, there's been discussion and I will do a roll call vote. Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of resolution awarding sale of bonds to the low interest rate bidder.
This morning at 11:30, the bids were opened up. We had one bidder, Huntington Public Capital Corporation. You should have received a packet from, that was a result of, I think it was a favorable packet. It's got the bid resolution, which I had given in Friday's report packet, but the names are now put on here. So the, if we're authorizing the sale of bids for, suppose you Huntington Public Capital Corporation. If I had to process or get the documents that you decide once the board authorizes it, the sale will actually, it'll be another set of documents that board president, secretary, treasurer will be deciding on. It's all going to be at the end of the week or maybe next week. We'll be in contact and then they officially sell bonds and put our bank into some PC and see. And then they assume to be more of a behavior. Also, I always...
Emotion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached bid provision awarding the sale of district's 2018 school building and site bond, CERIC to Huntington Public Capital Corporation as listed in the attached documentation.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of superintendent contract amendment number five.
I move to approve the superintendent's amendment to the contract between the Board of Education and the superintendent with respect to amendment five, section one.
I support.
Kyle.
Yes.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Brian, can you read, can you read the language again? It's got a lot of...
What it says?
Says, if you look at it.
Tracy, you want what this vote is, what it's going to say?
Okay. Section one reads, "The school district shall hereby employ the superintendent and the superintendent agrees to work with the school district for a period of commencing July 1st, 2014 and ending December 31st, 2022, subject to all conditions and conditions of this contract. It is understood and agreed that superintendent is employed in the capacity the superintendent has defined by the Michigan revised school code. To support the superintendent with daily operation in the needs of the district, the school district agrees to continually employ the following position, following exempt positions. Administrative assistant to superintendent, director of business and management services, payroll employee benefits coordinator, purchase and accounts payable coordinator, community days out of public relations secretary, director of curriculum and educational services, new languages director of facilities and operations, director of student support services, food service director, transportation director. Superintendent shall have the discretion to appropriately adjust title to their duty of said position and the FTE status of said position shall be mutually agreed upon based on the operational needs of the school district through the budget process. New language. Beginning July 1st, 2018, through the terms of this contract, unless mutually agreed upon otherwise, the school district and superintendent agree not to employ the position of director of curriculum and educational services."
Good. Tracy?
Yep. So now that we have the discussion, if you need to add one?
Yes.
I don't think I'm good moving forward, I just hope you can add it.
Add anything, I'm sure.
I mean, I'm good moving forward, taking a curriculum background and putting up field or facilities.
I agree with Sarah.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to two. That concludes our meeting. We are adjourned at 10:09.